Let's stand for our pledge. Actually, the flag is hiding behind the TV screen. Everybody sent to it?
Yes.
All right. Action salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, in the name of the Lord. Do you want to move up south, please? Thank you very much. Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment prior to the action items on the agenda. We ask that speakers identify themselves and their home district. We also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity for all speakers and ensure our meeting is reasonable. In this link, if you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the boards of need. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks. This time has elapsed. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or school administrator after the meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming. Is there a motion that we adopt our agenda for this evening?
I see one.
Motion is filed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Grob. On favor, aye? Aye. Close note. It's ordered donations.
We have two to report. Reynolds Baptist Church donated $100 for the basketball team to attend Liberty University camp. Lisa Jones donated a zero turn mower to a shop class. That's for Hopkins and that's for... Very nice. I'll play. Yes, me too.
After they fix it, they'll charge you a dollar.
Entrepreneurs too.
So be it. All right. Is there a motion concerning the adoption of the minutes from May 14?
To move.
A motion to adopt of Mr. Grob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben. Is there any discussion? On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close note. It's ordered verification of bills. Mr. Grob, do you have a chance to review those?
I did. I did notice we have a lot of end of the year bills. Like buying lots of fuel.
Yep.
Oh, yeah. I think so. Filling the tanks.
Filling the tanks and all that stuff. And also, we... There's a... I can't remember exactly how much it was for, but it was for... Oh, it's $58, $59, $100 for AP exams. And I'm assuming that's because we pay for the kids' AP exams.
Correct. Several years ago, that was established by the board to help offset the costs of AP exams. And likewise, that line is also used to pay the same amount of credit to our dual enrollment credit.
Right.
So the same credit is applied to the book. So that's that line.
Want to make sure it's still in the...
Absolutely. We protect that. And that provides great equity to our students. So thank you very much for keeping that.
I think we're probably one of the few systems that goes that far as far as helping kids pay for those kind of things. Adorable. Everything else was going to be shit.
So we would expect to see that. Our fiscal year runs until June 30th, so we would expect to see those kinds of things. All right. Then a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion, Mr. Uben. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is filed. This includes approval of the donations, payment of the bills, attendance report, and a special use request from headwaters for school buses at the end of the month.
Right.
All right. We have a motion, second, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close note. It's ordered.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we always do in June, have the school board meeting. It's the time where we approve all of our federal program applications. So we have a little overview for you to just quickly go over what these programs are and what they do for us. We don't get quite a lot of federal money for our whole operating budget, but we are very thankful for what we do get because it does provide very integral services. So through ESEA, which is the Elementary Secondary Education Act, the quick review of those Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV. Creative, right? So there's just a quick overview of what those do. Title I is for approving your basic programs. Title II is our professional development and training money we use for teachers and administrators. Title III is what supports your English language learners in the classroom for instruction for English proficiency. And Title IV is a new one for us. It does change categorizations at the state level, federal level, when there's new reauthorizations in place with those acts. Right now, it's for student support and academic enrichment. And I'll go over what we use that for currently and what the plans are to continue. Title I, we get $177,862 approximately because we don't really know what the feds are going to give us until September. So it's conjecture at this point based on our best known numbers that the state has given us at this time. So we anticipate, based on our numbers and projections, 7,800 up from last year. Those funds support 100% of our reading specialist, reading math interventionist salary. So that supports a whole position for us. It also got brought up a lot in our budget planning meetings about the number of aides we have. We have so many aides because they're federally funded and they really help us differentiate with different subgroups of students. And they're paid for in part by our federal. So Title I does cover three and a half positions for those aides because they do a lot of intensive work with our Title I at-risk reading and math population. So very useful. We definitely need them. We also use Title I monies for things like online intervention programs, iExcel, Imagine Learning, to name a few. Those are our tiered systems of supports for our students. Materials and supplies, Orton-Gillingham Training, which is...
I see.
That's our reading training. It's really changed the way we view teaching reading, especially for dyslexic students or those who are struggling that may have a different... Be somewhere on a spectrum of dyslexia. It's incredibly useful. It's been incredibly effective. And more and more teachers are dumping on board. So we are supporting additional training.
That is working.
It's working really well, yes. In fact, we were just at a school improvement training the last two days and we were reviewing some of our school data to put into the plans. And we were putting up some of our subgroup reading scores for these areas. And for the last two years that we've been using OG, the dramatic increase in specialized populations with reading. So we had other schools saying, "What are you doing to do that big of an increase in that short time?" So it's working really well. So, yes. Title I helps us support that, as well as headwaters help us support that the last couple of years. And also, there's a Title I agreement and it's a mandate that we have to have a homeless student or foster care transportation program in place with social services that we have to use in Title I to transport kids who are identified as homeless, living with relatives displaced. And there's a whole agreement separately that we put together for that as well. So Title I helps us support that. Title II, that's where we get our $29,000 to support all of these things that we do: tuition assistance, teacher recruitment expenses through our HR and going on those recruiting trips, conferences, trainings, and our LFCC educational consortium that we partner with our private schools to put the set aside funds that would have gone straight to their programs. They've decided to pull with us and collaborate so that we have the LFCC consortium opportunity for all teachers in the county regardless of their school. So we do a lot with that little bit of funds. We really try to stretch those dollars as much as we can by trying to collaborate with universities for cohort programs. And that's a model that you've seen over the past several years. And we've had many teachers go through those programs to earn additional endorsements, master's degrees. That's how we got our ESL endorsed teacher, all these things. And that's the money we use to support that. So we try to stretch those dollars as far as possible. It's not a lot, but we've got to be creative because we don't get that much. Title III, right now, our projection is about $2,300. However, we saw a huge increase for us within our Ls population. We went from 13 to 44 in a single year. So those numbers haven't been calculated yet on this allocation. So I'm willing to bet that's going to jump quite a bit. A bit better. So we need some more support for that. So these funds mainly used for materials and supplies to help those students become more proficient in English.
Can that include the computers or software?
It can. Yeah, we've used it before. We have done translation software or language acquisition, even family engagement type things. So we can use it for a broad array of different things.
Could it be used to pay translators?
Not really translation services. That's a mandate of the Division to be able to do. It's more for supplemental intervention services and language acquisition specifically.
But if we wanted to provide information to parents of this kind of children?
Yep.
We wanted that translator to stay for long?
We have a person on staff who does all our translations and also is our ESL aide. So we have a person, yeah. So this money doesn't go to pay that. We do get some state funds that help pay for a stipend for those services. So, yeah, we get different monies for that, but not the federal. Federal dollars can't be used for your mandated RITA testing, access for Ls testing, or translation services. They want that mandate to come from the state or the local levels. And then Title IV, academic enrichment. This money, $12,000, came to us. We have been using this like crazy with some of our new initiatives around mental health, counseling services, restorative justice, using our positive behavioral interventions, and social skills curriculum. So that's going to be essential for our new social worker when we officially hire that person to be able to have resources to make sure as we outline our new parallel curriculum for social emotional supports, this money will help us do that. And previously, the past couple of years, we've used it to provide counseling services for kids who may not be identified, for services in the other areas, for special ed or Title I, at-risk, anything like that. So it's been very helpful for children at risk or in disciplinary issues when those arise. We can provide additional support that we weren't necessarily able to do before. And then the ESL formula, you put all these things together and hopefully have success for every student. That was a Carol Johnson slide. So as an action item, we will ask that you approve our local plans and they are up for you to read through if you need to fall asleep. And we'll just need signatures on those and we have to upload those to the state before the month is out so we can get our funds. So please approve those.
Voting over.
Yes.
As a group?
Yes, sir. Okay. The next item, 4.2, is something we're very, very excited about. And I'm going to ask Mr. Bob Hurley from Rat Flo and Mr. Ben Temple, our Rat Henick Elementary Principal, to come up and give you all the details about what's going on with our courtyard.
Thank you, Dr. Temple. Good. I'm Bob Hurley. I live in the Hampton District and I'm a board member of Rat Flo, which is the environmental group in the county.
You're not going to speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. You might want to pull the mic out and just hold it or something.
The TV needs to hear you.
That way you can carry it with you wherever you're most comfortable. Thank you. Good, good. My name is Bob Hurley. I live in the Hampton District and I'm a board member of Rat Flo, which is the County Watershed Protection and Conservation, which is dedicated to protecting waters and watersheds in Rat Henick County. Over the years, we've become increasingly involved with the education programs here in the county, providing training and field day for the kids, soil testing, earth day programs and so forth. And just in the last year, we took on, developed this concept of renovating the school courtyard in the elementary school. It's quite a wonderful space and it's sort of fallen into a little bit of disrepair over the years. I'll be diplomatic. And so we thought, what a great idea to renovate that and really make it a very high-quality outdoor learning space for kids. So... I'm going to switch my... So one of the first things we did before we got too far out in front of this, we obviously spent a lot of time talking to Ben and Dr. Grimsley and others about how best to proceed. And we did a survey of the teachers in the elementary school. And we got a lot of feedback from them, basically saying that, you know, the most used space was obviously the playground, but that there was a high interest in having a higher quality outdoor learning space, which led us right to the courtyard. So we, as a result of that, we... Outdoor education, which was the slide, sorry, was formed with teachers. And we saw input from them as to what the best way to go forward was. So we worked with an attorney, an architect, Rick LaSalle, here in county, who developed very detailed drawings for us for the courtyard. And I could probably do that at the end. I'll go ahead and follow that slide or we'll get the other one. Yeah, we have the renovation design there. And that's sort of a photo of the drawing. As you can see, if you go to the next slide, it's very detailed, but the area to the south, there's a couple of double doors there with how you actually support your art now, which is sort of the farm table, growing area for the kids. We're going to completely redo that, put new beds in for flowers or vegetable growing for the various grades in the elementary school. Some of them are going to be handicapped accessible where if the kids are in wheelchairs, they can get under there and do their planting. We're going to have this walkway put in, which will make the whole area handicapped accessible for the kids. And we're going to have a greenhouse where plants and vegetables and things can be grown in the cold room once before they're then transferred to the plant and... In the center area, and this is really going to be a great feature of the courtyard, the new steam lab, which is the room there that you see as you come through the front door of the school. There's no access out to the courtyard from there, which is sort of a room. And so we're going to put a door in there, which will lead out to this beautiful pavilion, which has a concrete base on it. And it'll basically be an outdoor classroom for the kids.
And Dr. Grimsley's office.
Yeah. Everybody, I think, will be fighting for that.
That's a school reception area.
And Ben and our discussions made a very good point. He said, "Well, maybe we ought to just sort of segment, you know, just kind of do this in a way where we start with the growing area and maybe the natural area off of the pond is." And Ben said, "You really got to have that pavilion in there because that's going to be the big draw for the teachers." So we upped our ante on that and said, "Okay, we're going for that." And I'll get to the funding part of it when I come in. This is sort of the key center of this school. So in here, we'll have a fan that'll be run by solar power. There'll be a solar power demonstration project in there where the kids can come in and see how solar energy works, power the fan. And there's a display there that will show how much the voltage is generated, so on and so forth. And we'll have these wonderful little benches around for the kids to use as desks. They also fold over and they become seats as well, sitting there very well. So there'll be nice gatherings under the pavilion for teaching and so forth. And then the northern part of the... What's the next slide? Of the courtyard is where the current little pond is and some of the native plants and shrubs that's all, they've all overgrown. We're going to completely tear all of that out. Well, we'll save a lot of the plants, whatever shrubs and plants that we can. We'll do new ponds. And then in there, we're going to have, will be a labyrinth, which is nicknamed a mindful maze. I don't know if you all know what labyrinths are, but basically it gives kids quiet opportunities to kind of move around in circles and wind down a little bit and be a little bit more thoughtful and aware about the environment around them. And, next slide? And then another feature will be the current pond will be reinvigorated and picked up. And we'll have a waterfall going in there as well. And that'll be powered with a pump with by solar energy. So that'll be kind of a quiet, nice area with falling water. And we'll have these movable seats that can be used in that area for kids to just sit down, relax, or have reading buddies, or kind of quiet time, or what have you. So that's another special space. So there's these three really different areas that you think will really add to the courtyard and make it quite usable and again, a great space. And there may be opportunities in the future where, you know, others could use the space in the community. We can obviously talk about it all the way, but once it gets underway. So we saw the earlier slide with who our partners were, and this sort of sums that up as well. We... I'll talk a little bit about the numbers. We estimate this project to be $65,000. And all of it will be funded by outside organizations for making significant donations to the school patients. Headwaters has committed $20,000. Rat Flo is going to commit up to $20,000. We met with the Krebsor Fund on Sunday and they have recommended to PEC to give us a grant between $15,000 and $20,000. And I just applied on Sunday to the PATH Foundation for a grant for $10,000. And we just heard yesterday that the Richard Lice Fund is going to give us $5,000. So we're really catching fire with this project and I think it's going to be a wonderful resource for the kids and, you know, to get it going, have a big ribbon cutting and all that sort of thing. So just on the kind of administrative side of it, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the school system. The school system is going to be the project manager. They're going to sign all the contracts and manage the contracts and so on and so forth. They will send bills to us. We will cut checks back to them to reimburse for the costs. And Robin Bolt, who's the head of the administrative program, is here to run the operation. She's great. She's right on top of it. So Ben, I didn't let you say anything. Here. Sorry, I just got carried away.
It's all right. I just want to thank all of the organizations who are supporting this. It's going to be a great space that we're hoping the community will come out and use. I think our yoga team might be going outside after school and using the space, but we'd like the community to come out when school's not in session, be able to use the space for different things. Rachel has done a lot of work with this, so I want to thank her. It started out as just, "Let's put a pavilion out there," and it's morphed into a whole complete remodel.
So fun though.
And it's a lot... Her work and her oversight, so thank you. It's going to be a great space and our teachers are excited. Our kids are excited. I don't think they're going to really know what to expect. They heard about it, but I don't think they're going to know until they see it.
So Ben, so you come in the front door of the school and you go through that room directly, probably there'll be a door there to get in.
There's a door that will go right out to the pavilion.
I mean, safety-wise, that's a great...
So we have two accesses.
Yes, two access points.
And so it's very exciting. And I'm thinking about the timeline. So can you share a timeline?
Well, right now, they have removed the trees. That was the first part. So it has opened up the space. The foundation for the pavilion, it's already had the rocks and the rebar. I think they're laying concrete next week. The door to the steam lab is going in tomorrow with the windows. And after that, and once we get the pavilion up, it's the planting boxes and putting them where we want them, and then the labyrinth and updating the pond. So it's all going to be done before school starts. That's the goal.
Yes, so that's exciting.
And Monday, we have a volunteer day. We're going to donate our farm crew for the day, for the afternoon.
June 17th, if anybody wants to come out.
June 17th, it's volunteer day.
National honor society.
I'll wear my old clothes on Monday and get up there.
I guess I'm starting to think what a great place to have a school board meeting.
Absolutely, yeah.
School board meetings. And kind of like a kickoff.
If we could do it before the weather got cold.
Thank you. We're still doing that. Is that okay?
Yeah, I could film it from out...
It's a big pavilion.
It's huge.
Yeah, it's a big pavilion, yeah.
Very good.
Seating space or we actually use the seating space.
I don't see a double door for a tractor or...
Maybe our September meeting?
I don't know. What do you think? Anyway, let's think about it.
Think about it.
Yeah. I can note people, so they don't have to come to your...
And there'll be electricity out there and I believe Dr. Bolt is getting a big weatherproof monitor, it's a touchscreen, so it'd actually be some lessons out there with...
Well, I would recommend because August 13th, the day before school starts, and we can show you everything in the elementary that's all different. If it's ready. It should be by now.
Hopefully.
Well, that's a good firm date for them to get it ready.
Yeah. It must be done by...
A lot of we do... A lot of we're looking for organizations to come out.
Hey, that's the way I do that night.
But then we can showcase all the rest of the renovations going on in the elementary school too. That is going to look like a brand new school whenever they comes back.
So, yeah, I just want to mention the master gardener.
I don't want to push too hard, but if we could do that and have your ribbon cutting and the organizations to give, you know, to acknowledge their contributions.
It'd be a great night, but it might be too aggressive.
Let us know.
So look at the schedule, let us know what's reasonable.
Yeah. I think once we get that pavilion in, things are going to go fast, you know? And it's been permitted, I believe, and it's been approved by the county and so it's just...
The corners are laid, everything's ready.
Yeah. We can get it done. That's the goal. I just want to mention that the master gardeners and the master naturals are also on, we'll be able to support from them, through some of the county. They're going to help not just with the renovation and planting, but sustaining as well. And they have a junior master gardeners program working with the kids as well. They can do classes in there. It's just going to be all kinds of...
Close, like after school?
Close, right? It's great.
It's so fun.
We're really excited. The solar thing is a great addition too, a great idea.
Yeah.
It's a great idea for the education.
Well, Rachel's been a huge...
Well, I feel like it fits so well with what we've been talking about this year in terms of wellness and the whole person.
Hands-on.
You can read so many studies about just being outside for a moment can change the whole day. And that will trickle down to teachers and students and teach some life skills about how to feel good in your life and about the basic things, as well as scientific principles and how to... I'm very excited about it.
Appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
It's great. Great. Great space. Thank you very much for coming and telling us.
Thank you.
That concludes these reports.
Thank you. Well, that was exciting. Headwaters report.
I was at the headwaters meeting and I actually had the chance to present about the same thing that Bob just did and they met and that was the meeting at which they agreed to help with this project. That's sort of... I'm sure there was more that happened, but that was what exploded in my mind because I was so excited.
That's all she remembered.
Yeah. That was the main point for me.
Twenty grand?
But there were, but there are other things. I'm sure Kevin in the public comment can pull you in on other aspects of that.
He'll do that.
They're busy.
He'll refresh our memory of other things, right, Tim?
Sure.
All right. Thanks. All right. Do we need TS?
Yeah, we do need... All right. I even have notes. Basically, we went through the routine of electing officers, setting meeting dates, doing all those kinds of things. We did add two part-time research advisors to assist students, which is a... And we were able to do that with teachers who have retired. And so they just go come back on an hourly basis. It's not going to cost very much. It's not going to adversely affect our budget, you know, the budget that we set for them because we're doing what's called not to turn over money. Two teachers retired, hired two young teachers, saved a whole bunch of money on that side of it. So that's going to cover the expense of it. But it's going to help kids with their individual research figures and their research projects. So it's going to be a real asset. We saw three exceptional presentations, student presentations. They talked about things I had absolutely no idea what they were talking about, but they knew what they were talking about. And it's quite impressive. There is a summer enrichment program. Go on to mdgshome.org website and get all the summer enrichment stuff. Upcoming events, June 30, 31, the new student orientation. We have one new student, I believe. Six and seven, parent orientation, and then their first day of school, almost twelve. Do I leave anything else?
No. That's all?
Thank you. Is there somebody from the policy committee that has a summary statement to make about this collection of changes?
It's done.
It's done.
I have to ask one thing though. Sorry. There were a lot of changes to policy, but a lot of them were, you know, just in the minutia of the verbiage that, you know, that's in shall and he or she, you know, that kind of thing. But it was, the SBA have updated their local tobacco policy. And you remember a couple of years ago that Y Street did a whole lot of work on developing a local policy? And they were actually integral in lobbying for the SBA to change their policy to be more comprehensive. So, they have done that. It is still comprehensive, but it still requires a superintendent's regulation. And I, we contacted Holly Tillman from Y Street to get her feedback. She says our local one is still more comprehensive and, you know, it's their recommendation to stay with the one they developed, of course. But, you know, the SBA has all of the components now and then it offers you the coverage if you adopt it. And then, anything that's left out, now that I have to create a regulation, I can put in there. So, it's a board decision because it is policy if you want to stay with the Y Street adopted policy or we can take the B SBA one, develop the reg for anything that's missing.
So.
What do you?
Usually, we don't do our own thing.
Right.
We don't have to.
And we did it that time because one of our own students worked to create and enact a little bit of policy, which was amazing and they did a great job. And it actually made its way to the SBA. So, a lot of that work is incorporated there. So, I think they're very proud of that. But I like the coverage that it provides because it is B SBA's adopted policy.
Now, the one that we're looking at here, this G B C one? Yeah? The Tobacco Free School Staff?
Yes.
Is that it?
G B C.
That's.
G B C G is in.
That one is ours.
G is in.
Our local.
Right.
And tonight, we're basically, what we ran and we've never known is to vote for this one to become part of our policy. And it stands different than the one that Richmond has, the O E.
Well, I think what we're asking tonight is to go back to the SBA, get away from the local policy.
Right.
Yes.
And then you would add in.
You would add in what?
A regulation.
In the regulation.
For example, one thing that's missing from the comprehensive B SBA is making sure we alert visitors of our policy with signage. That's not in the general policy, but we can easily put that in the regulation. So, it's still altogether comprehensive and will have all the Y Street components that we've worked on and still protect what the student have worked on. Actually, we were just renaming it, so it's. We're including everything that was included before, but we're just.
But it makes it a whole lot easier because all the cross-references with the other policies and like the name change and so.
Cross-references, every time there's new updates.
Right. It's just, it's easier just.
It's much easier. And this is important too because according to this thing, even when people are visiting from an away location to our schools, right, we've got to make sure our signage is good because we're tough. This is tough. I mean, it's not just.
You can't possess it.
It's not even, you know, it's not cigarettes. It's a complete list of anything.
Baby, cigarettes, chewing tobacco, any tobacco products.
Right. Very thorough.
So, when people come from other places to, you know, for sporting events, do we, do they send, do we send a regulation within our, the HSL group knows these are the rules when you come to Rabahannan or?
Each locality is usually, you know, has to enforce their own policies, but that's a typical, I mean, most schools now are no tobacco, so no smoking.
Yeah.
They're just including, you know, a lot of the updates with the easterides and the baby stuff and, you know.
We've talked about put signage down by the football field. Did you do that?
I think we did. We put it up everywhere.
I don't remember seeing any, but that doesn't mean anything. I stopped a long time ago.
We'll double check as we're updating this.
They burned it down.
I stopped a long time ago.
Hey, so, tell me this, you might know this personally, but, so, you know, somebody's at a baseball game, they're smoking, you say you're not allowed to smoke here. They go to their car.
Still on property.
It's still on property, even though inside of the vehicle.
When I work a game, you're not allowed to use it. I'm not going to make them, you know, take it across the street and leave it, leave the cigarette pack on the ground. They keep it in their car. But when I work it out on them, use it if you want to smoke, you have to go out to the side of the road.
Outside of the property.
Some people have.
Just want to make sure we know what we're saying here.
Is there signage at the baseball field?
Baseball field, I don't know. We don't work a lot of games. Typically, we work football, basketball, volleyball, something else.
Well, 10 years ago, they would send it to their car.
Yeah, I don't. I mean, and I told my guys not to. They're not allowed to use it. They can't dip, they can't smoke, they can't do. So, then we patrol the parking lot.
Yeah, so, that means the thing we're about to vote on would be the replacement of this thing that we've got in our packet with the B SBA version and the modification of regulations to include what's missing. That's what we would be voting on. So, when we make that motion, we need to make sure we're clear in the motion that we have that exception to what we just got presented, right? Are you cool?
Yep.
That'll make our life easier long-term.
Definitely. And we haven't changed anything.
Alright. Thanks for doing that work, policy committee. Alright, information items. We're at 6 dot 1, everybody. Am I correct? 6 dot 1. So, we're headed in November back to the annual school board conference where we need a delegate and an alternate delegate, which we've always voted on. For the last many years, it's been Larry and, right?
Yes.
Are we doing it again?
Sure.
Are you going to spread the joy or are you going to?
Yeah.
I know where to go, sir.
Being the assistant.
It is a good experience, by the way. If somebody wants that experience.
It's.
Alright, so, we're going to.
It's like a long meeting.
All I'm saying is, it's educational to sit in the room for at least one year. So, the delegate will be Mr. Grove and alternate is Meyer. We're good? So, that's what we'll be voting on. And action item 8 dot 3. Alright, and 6 dot 2 was media honor roll. We all have a chance up here to see this.
So, each year, the board has an opportunity to nominate anyone in the media that they would like to, and up to three, actually, if you so choose, for these traits, making the effort to know the superintendent and the board chair, understanding the division's mission and goals, and reporting school news in a manner that's fair, accurate, and balanced, gives a high-profile position, a good news about schools, regularly visits the schools and attends board meetings, and maintains a policy of no surprises by sharing information with school reps.
And so, this year, the board was considering Blue Ridge Independent. Is that the whole name?
Yes.
Blue Ridge Independent.
We can also, we could do more than one. We could also, again, recognize, I can agree, it's also, I think Blue Ridge Independent is a good choice. They've been doing a lot of coverage and they don't get covered. But I do think that acknowledging the scholarships and that set of things, the rabbinic news, that the USA Contest was a new thing with the news daily. And I think that was a good, it was good to get student voices into the newspaper, although, you know, I mean, not all student voices are like fun to hear, but I think it does help us to learn as a board what the student ideas are.
We can certainly do more than one.
You can, and you have the opportunity each year. Last year, we did recognize rab news before they were. So, but you can, we only have two really.
We only have two. You only have two.
Well, it's four. I'm not sure if that's a news.
I'm speaking to Don, they're Holly.
The what?
Well, she works for me.
But she works for us.
That would be a self-feeling.
But we're grateful. So, if it's all right with the board, we're basically giving guidance at this point to send these down to, we present the resolutions at a later date.
Yes, and we'll put those together. One thing I did want to say is, since Blue Ridge Independent has been in operation, they have really increased our visibility with our athletic programs and a lot of our meetings and supports and things. And we've gotten a lot, a lot of calls, positive feedback about that in the community. So, I think it's important that we recognize that.
So, it'll be our intent vote, it'll be in our intent to recognize vote. So, right? Because we're not voting on that. I think it's something that we just vote on later when we actually have the resolution. Yeah?
Yeah, we're fortunate to have two outlets working hard to cover all the things that happen in our little division.
Alright, thanks. At this time, public comment, anyone wants to address the board this evening? Kevin, I think you might be first and last.
Well, as you know, I'm Kevin Brander. I'm the director of Headwaters and I have only a week left, just like. Again, I would repeat that we are doing the summer course again. It starts on Monday, we have a concert coming up, not next Friday, the following Friday at Castle's at 6:00. So, please mark it on your calendars, please, come coming out. It's going to be a great, great event.
23? Is that the 23rd?
Next Saturday. That's, that Friday, 28.
28. Thanks.
Yes.
Concert is on 23rd.
6:00 PM, the circus.
So, we are really excited about that. We have, I think, still about 30 kids who are going to be joining us. So, hopefully, we don't lose some of them along the way, but even that is still a long way to go. We've had previous years and we've had students coming from not just Rabahannan, but from Colton. So, the board's getting, another exciting thing is happening at Rabahannan. It's one of the great things that happens here.
6:00 PM.
Strategic planning, we're doing our strategic planning on next Friday. We're not having summer course. We have our strategic planning at the Rabahannan Academy, however. So, we're going to be reviewing the responses and the contact from you and from the community and deciding what we're going to be doing for the next five years. It's a really exciting time to be, to be Headwaters because there's a lot of exciting things happening in the schools. So, we are, we're thrilled and we know it's going to be a longer process, but we're very excited about what's happening here and we look forward to being a part of that. So, thank you very much all. And finally, for those people who have been looking for a summer experience, we moved. We are now over at the schoolhouse in Little Washington. So, if you're waiting for us, it was very helpful.
That's where you're meeting then?
That's where I'm meeting this session.
Oh.
Not the last meeting, the one coming.
I know the last meeting wasn't there.
It makes for a longer Washington.
I wish I could.
Well, closer to home, so, it helps out there. Anyway, that's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Kevin. Anyone else? Alright, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve federal programs' applications as presented this evening?
It's a move.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second is Meyer. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? It's a move. Is there a motion to approve the policy changes with the stipulation that we're going to be modifying the, I forgot to leave it up.
G B C.
Whatever those, to align with the smoking policy regulations from the SBA, our policies, and to modify our regulations to fill those gaps, right? Are we okay with that? Are you? Alright, that's complicated. We know what we're voting on, don't we? Do we?
Aye.
All in favor, do we have a motion?
It's a move.
We have a motion, Mr. Uden, is there a second?
Second.
Second is Meyer. Any other discussion on those things? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? It's ordered. Motion to approve the B SBA delegate and alternate?
It's a move.
You have a motion, Mr. Uden, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Biden? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
No. Knock down, knock the door.
Three, two.
Two, you stick me with that.
Motion carries. Is there any new business? No, is there any, you did the date for the next meeting, I didn't write it down.
July 9.
July the 9th? July the 9th is our next meeting. It's the same location, 6:30 here, and a motion to move into closed session.
I move the board convening in closed session for the following purposes, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff members for professional coaching positions, discussion of superintendent's evaluation pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
Hold on.
You got it.
31? I got the wrong one.
Unless I'm being evaluated.
I'm sorry. We already did that.
Can you change it?
Not going to tell you. Anyway, alright, I'm sorry.
You got it.
Move to, move that the board convene in closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment of staff members for professional classified coaching and volunteer position and resignation of professional position pursuant to code, Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711A1.
Alright, now we have a motion.
A second.
Thank you, Larry. We have a motion, Mr. Grove, second is Biden. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? And so, we're going to recess, give you time to leave. We're going to be in closed session for?
Seven minutes.
Seven minutes. If you want to hang around, you're good. We're staying in closed session. We need to certify that only things discussed per the motion were discussed during closed session.
Chris Uven certifies. There you go, certified.
Rachel Biden certifies.
Wesley Mill certifies.
Suzanne Meyer certifies.
Very closed session. We heard the personnel report and so I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the personnel report and the addendum as they were presented this evening. Motion, Mr. Uden, second, Mr. Grove. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, no? It's ordered and a debrief. Since it's an exciting time, a debrief of the personnel report. Dr. Ritz.
Sure. Take care of one very high-profile position that we worked really hard to get into our budget, namely our school social worker. So, we have interviewed candidates and came out with an outstanding candidate who is also an MSW as well as an LCSW clinician, which means not only can they support services with families, do home visits, but they can also provide onsite intervention services and mental health supports to our students as they need it immediately onsite, which was a huge gap that we were struggling with. So, that person is Kathy Sickler. And she comes to us from National Counseling Group. She's a familiar face. She has worked with us before as the supervisor there to help set up counseling services. She's thrilled about the position and we're thrilled to have her.
And she would technically start in July?
Yes, mid-July is probably after she has to go through client terminations and things.